The first item of business is adopting our tenant. Do you like your motion on that? And the motion is seconded and discussed. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed? I've got four and one bin book. Now, as all of you know, we have lost our county attorney. Sally decided she wanted to move on to other things, and we certainly wish her well. At this point in time, no decision has been made on a permanent replacement. We have asked Holly Gross, who has also worked for the county for some time, and many of you know well, we have asked her to become our interim county attorney. Now, do I hear a motion that we adopt this?
Sure.
Or is this a... Nailed discussion. All in favor, raise your hand. You know? We have a lot of familiar faces out tonight, a lot of people that work for the water department and do it well, and that is certainly one of the bright spots of our county. We are very fortunate to have the fine water department that we have, and we have to present an award to that group is Mr. Tom Boyer, Ms. Lisa Edwards. Is that here? There we are. Either or both of you come forward.
Can I use this as a... Can I use this area? Mr. Chairman, commissions, what are your... Well, thank you for the opportunity to present this prestigious award to the Water Department. What we are presenting is a 2010 AWAT, Area Wide Optimization Program Award for optimizing turbidity and microbial contamination. What that means is turbidity removal is one of the gauges that we use to judge the health for public health of the water and any contaminants that may be in it. Current EPA and state regulations stipulate a .3 NTU, which is neophallic turbidity units, being maintained 95% of the time. And just so you know what that means, you can, it looks like a clear glass of water. You can't even see any turbidity or muddy that's colliding in the water. So, we require them to meet .3 in the regulations. Well, they've gone way far beyond, and they're meeting a .1 more NTU. This is a prestigious award for that. They really work hard. To get this award, they have to show data, lots of data, lots of actions of keeping individual... The water plant has filters. Those filters must be below .1 95% of the time, and they have to report this data to us, to the state. And according to EPA, the difference between .3 NTUs and .1 NTUs is a tenfold removal in pathogenic organisms. Pathogenic organisms are organisms that could make you sick. So, with that said, North Carolina has 151 surface water systems. That is water plants that take water from the surface stream, and only 25 out of the whole state made this award. So, with that said, I know the time is short. I'd like to present this award to Sparks Road Water Tribe. Mr. Chairman, will you put your hands if that's okay?
Yeah, we're fine there. Johnny.
Johnny, come up.
Bring your whole crew up.
Come on, everybody needs to come up.
We've got everybody here, so this is something that needs to be done.
This isn't for the person. I mean, there's a lot of people here, from engineers to foretech to... Come on in, y'all. It's all these people that work very hard to get stuff like this, so we gotta thank the commissioners for letting us spend the money to do stuff so we can do this and that and that and that. This is for everybody here, so.
Yeah.
Old David County Commissioners and your citizens, the public, these are your champions. Leave hats off to them.
You're here.
You guys are welcome to stay. I guess we don't have all that to happen. John, you...
Yeah.
Just want to tell you how proud we are of what you accomplished for your folks. You've got a good group, and you do a good job. I think it goes further than what's said tonight. We are very blessed to have as much of our county with public water as we do. We would like to have all of it, absolutely, but we haven't been able to quite get there yet, but I'm very optimistic that we will. We have a bright future ahead of us, and with Johnny leading the group down there, I think we're gonna do well. Thanks for all you're doing, guys.
Thank y'all.
We have another guest, as always, with WABE.
It's kind of made me wish I brought some gallon jobs. You might take some of this water home with you. As he said, my name is Mary Owens, and I'm the people that's with me from our interview booth today.
Hi, Regina Chaplin, WABE CSBG Administrative Assistant. Nice to be here.
I'm Danny Harris, Executive Director of WABE.
I'm Tim Cleveland, Assistant Executive Director of WABE.
I'm Zach Case, David County Representative, Chairman of the Board.
And tonight, we're going to talk about the Community Service Block Grant Program, or better known as the CSBG program, and hiring others to help themselves. Our grant award allocation from the Office of Economic Opportunity is $328,526. This amount is set by the block map formula according to six specific... Our goal is to serve 180 customers in a three-year period, which would be 60 customers a year. Our self-sufficiency program is designed to assist individuals and families to overcome poverty and become economically self-sufficient. Our service model assists customers to obtain a higher education, gain employment and jobs paying a living wage, meet challenges related to transportation and childcare, and to empower their sales in the process of becoming self-reliant. We also encourage participants to take part in activities such as survival skills, resume writing, budgeting skills, financial literacy, dress for success, and nutrition education. Our primary long-range goal with this grant is to reduce the number of individuals and families in poverty within a two-year period. This goal will be achieved by providing individual lives intensive, comprehensive, poised to case management services and activities to families that are enrolled in our program. We at WABE believe that desired individuals and families will become more self-sufficient and positive contributors to society with the proper resources, education, referrals, support network, obtainable goals, and to focus on our participants' strengths. Each eligible individual and family enrolled in the program can be assisted for a two-year period. A contract agreement is developed and signed by all appropriate family members. This agreement is documented in a success plan along with short-term objectives and long-term goals. This agreement contains barriers and problems as identified, a success plan of action that details specific assistance objectives, and a work plan agreed upon by individual family and our success coaches. This outlines responsibilities of all parties involved. We go by the poverty guidelines at the state level. We serve customers at 100%, but 100% below poverty level. Our self-sufficiency program is based upon the following beliefs: Able-bodied people should work. A hand up is better than a hand out. Buy a person a fish, you've fed them for a day. Teach a person a fish, you've fed them for a lifetime. Helping people help others should be a way of life. The CSBG program falls on both sides of the political aisle. Obviously, serving populations below 100% poverty, this program is democratic in nature because it serves very low-income households. However, the operation of the program is republican in nature because it demands responsibilities of the participants of the program. CSBG participants must follow a success plan, goals, before any assistance whatsoever is provided. CSB staff members are the gatekeepers to the taxpayer's money. This is not a handout program. When this program is successful, our participants graduate from the program with earning high enough, earning high enough that they are no longer eligible for welfare cash assistance. Graduates are both financially self-sufficient and socially self-reliant, so that these families remove themselves from the reviving door of poverty. We're also family, rather than individually focused, in the attempt to break generational poverty choices. This program does not provide emergency assistance, which only serves as a Band-Aid approach and has no long-term effect on poverty. This program is a long-year, two-year structured process that is designed to remove root causes of poverty in households and which leads to lasting economic self-sufficiency. Our self-sufficiency program will be individualized to each household. It will include an intense nature, a holistic approach, and we will attempt to draw upon every available community resource to supplement the CSBG funds to assist citizens to becoming self-sufficient. WABE often serves as a brokerage for services in the community in addition to its core model of in-house services. Our collaboration, our list is long, working in four counties, and we work very diligently weekly, touching other agencies to bring them on board with us. Eligibility and enrollment, upon referrals, all participants are provided with an orientation of a full array of CSBG services. If the participant is interested in pursuing services, they participate in a needs assessment of the applicant's current situation. Participants who are both eligible and suitable, and I'd like to say that again, participants who are both eligible and suitable, will be enrolled in the self-sufficiency program on a first-come, first-served basis for as long as the funding is available. If the participant does not make the responsibility, make the responsible efforts to follow the success plan, goals, and objectives within 30 days, the participant will have terminated themselves from our program. I'd like to say that WABE is serving proudly Davie, Stokes, Surrey, and Yankton County with this grant. And again, I'd like to say my name is Mary Owens, and I'm the Director of the Community Service Block Grant.
I could hit a couple of summary points to the CSBG grant. This is a federal block that the state passed through, delivered to David County by the Community Action Network. As I became Executive Director of WABE, I turned Mary's world upside down. We got stated to a brunt of doing emergency assistance, and emergency assistance is not what the CSBG program, as we see it, was all about. It's always a Band-Aid approach with no real effect on the poverty level, and so we're up the ante. The clients that we serve have a low responsibility of going to work if we can help those folks find a job, going to school if we're assistant of education. We are going to emphasize education and working closely with Davidson Community College here in David County. We work very closely with the Department of Social Services. You're probably wondering, where do you get referrals from? Becky Fanny does a really good job at DSS of making referrals. Out of the slots that we will actually enroll, say 60 slots, I'll probably get 1,200 referrals for those slots, and that's where Mary made the point about eligibility. There's 100% poverty, which is very, very low. Your work first level is 200% poverty that makes most eligible for talent services here in David County, so we're even lower than that. But we want folks that are suitable for our program, that agree to follow a structured process, because there is a low responsibility to clients being successful in our program. So, if we get clients that, you know, come in and are not willing to do their part in our program, not willing to follow a structured case plan for a year, up to two years or however long it takes to get folks out of poverty, and they're really not suitable for our program. So, that's where it's pretty demanding. It's not a handout. It demands responsibility so that we can have measurable outcomes. As money gets tied, you're gonna have to be showing some really good performance standards, and so when we screen our programs, screen our clients, it makes sure that we need to make sure that we get folks in there that can meet poverty standards, because everything we can do in Community Services Block Grant really boils down to one question: When you exit our program, are you working, making an income above the poverty level? So, we have to be kind of careful. We want to make sure that folks are on board with us, going to school, going to work, and doing what you're supposed to do. This is a very good model of service. The only thing that works against us right now is the barrier that the clients have, or more severe, partially because of economic recession times and job availability, which we're here, but we're on a national level. So, we're out here working with Employment Security Commission, working with the community colleges, working with DSS. They get clients, and we're kind of the upper rung of the ladder to get folks truly out of poverty, to get folks, again, where they can reach income levels above, hopefully about 200% poverty level. Any questions?
Have any questions?
One question, sure. There's 60 clients over the four counties, not David County, right?
Right. It's actually a three-year plan. It will be 180 clients served for three years, that's 60 per year, but that is over the four different counties. And keep in mind the barriers that our folks bring to them: Transportation, childcare, lack of education, no employment, underemployment, that sort of thing. And that's why we try to keep our numbers low so that we can do the intensive case management that helps to help our folks do well. Little things like our folks are horrified to go to the community college and sign up for classes. They're afraid they'll go in the wrong building and end up in the financial aid office instead of admissions office, little things like opening a checking account, sometimes things we take for granted. Folks are real curious about that when it comes to the money. So, there's a lot of hand-holding, but keep it in mind, or teaching folks to be self-reliant as far as the future is concerned. So, it's a heavily-buried population, kind of keep low numbers, but make sure that you're successful, hopefully with a high number of those families.
If that, in terms of your definition of success, that they have that job above the poverty level, in terms of that, let's just say, for example, I came into the program and then two months later, I had that job. How do you transition folks in and out of the program? Or do they stay in the program for two years and you continue to work with them? How does that work?
It's individualized, and that is a judgment call. Everybody has a job, they're clear as snow, and they've got childcare and transportation. Children will follow for about three months, but then we'll terminate those folks and open the slot for the next person to come.
So, you do transition them in and out of that?
We do. Average length of time, and we're rolling this about a year, year and a half. It can be 24 months of participation, so it can be a two-year process. And now, maybe we'll have a student that needs to take an RN exam or something like that or take an extra class. I can't get permission, it's all a little bit gone. Two years from now, we want to keep those options open so we can service them if they want us to fund them or not.
Do you have any, is this the first cycle of the way you're looking at it, Mr. Chairman, in terms of the accountability levels? I was just wondering if you had, you mentioned an RN exam, that kind of thing. Do you have folks that are coming into the program and are, one of the community colleges getting their registered nurse?
And that's what we're trying to help, all different levels. And in the end, the CSBG folks at the federal level look at like average earnings, because they're not going to help us afford anybody to graduate minimum wage, and so we're trying to get the average, again, above poverty level. And nursing is one of our better training programs across all the different levels, like you have personal care technician, CNA 1, 2, the bottom, LPN, RN. So, if we have somebody out there with CNA 2, and they want to go on to nursing, either us or someone else can help that person advance within that particular field. Obviously, we're thinking about a lot of side issues too, like health care insurance that goes along with the job. Hopefully, make it as decent a wage as we can possibly get. We will emphasize education, because you know, if you lose your job, you have, I mean, dislocated workers, which is sort of a new impoverished population, but they're sometimes almost ready to become homeless, and we're serving some laid-off people in this population, which is new to us. But we can do training. What I do try to do is limit my training, so you can have like one year of training, time to find employment, and then about three months of stability on that particular job. We're not going to throw people to the wolves, but have a little bit of stability, then terminate the program, we get another family to fill that slot.
So, you use the term "up in the end," so it'd be maybe a year or so before we'd be able to get some solid numbers of what...
So, just to be honest with you, we're dealing with a need for right now, people that's never called themselves in this position, that lives in their homes, that lives in their coffers, people that have been stable all their life. Mr. Harris did say that if they're in school, we're gonna do our part, you know, and if they're in school, like right now, we're working with, in Stokes County, we're working with Dick Powell, the linesman over there. These men's got to work for years now, and just got enrolled, what, in three months? They're probably making $18 an hour. You know, they're probably making $18 an hour. Those families will move on, and we're helping with more, I mean, people that are broken. People don't know what to do, they don't know to turn left or turn right, and whenever they come to us, they're broken.
And part of that comment, too, is to make sure that folks are following realistic career goals to where if there are jobs out there, the community college helps us with that. If you're just having to get your rent paid or your power bill paid for one month, but you're not gonna go to work and do anything, that's reviving gold, and that's what we're getting away from, just emergency assistance funding, kind of going down a deep hole. It's into a structured program where you're doing something so that a year, year and a half from now, you won't have to rely on social services or anybody else for those rent, for those payments, and things like that. You can do that yourself. That's how that counts as self-sufficient. And also, we use social reliance on there too, to where people become productive members of the community, and we work hard on that. Children are doing better in school. Hopefully, you know, again, homelessness is an issue even in rural counties now, with folks losing jobs, and so make sure it's a whole list. We look at every part of a person's life, or some of the other programs are just individual, just that person, we're looking at the whole level of family function.
So, based on your "up in the end," it'll be maybe a good point to look at it in about a year to kind of see how successful the program is. Do you all do drug testing?
Yes, we can do drug testing.
If that's, if that looks like that's a problem with it?
Obviously, we want to try and help find jobs, that's gonna happen, drug testing part, obviously. And we do share our statistics with the starters here to be able to share it with the county commissioners, really on a monthly basis, but I'll do an annual report every year that keeps us up on how we're doing, what a new program model. I've operated this model for 14 years in Forsyth County. It's very successful. A little bit more opportunity in western Forsyth County, but there's still things going on in rural areas, and some of our folks can't get it once it's worked. I know how it's done, it's just putting it to work in rural counties. Job availability right now is a big struggle.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
WABE has provided a great service to this county for some time, and we thank you for it. We're probably working with you. Okay, we have changed our purchasing policy and progress rate plan.
Good evening and Happy New Year. On page 16 of your agenda package, you'll find the purchasing policy with proposed changes highlighted. We've marked out some of the old numbers in the new things that we're proposing. What we're proposing is increasing the limit required for purchase order from $300 to $1,000, and also increasing the limit for the county manager to approve it from $1,000 to $5,000, and all the rest of the limits will remain the same as they have been in the previous one. By making the change, this will increase the efficiency by reducing any administrative time used in doing requests, making the purchase orders, and decrease the time that it takes to get the purchase items that we purchased. These changes satisfy the Evergreen recommendation, that's number 3-4 in their report, and that one is called Develop Purchasing Procedures to Allow Department Heads to Purchase Small-Dollar Items Without Prepayment. And if you choose to approve the policy that you have before you, it'll be effective starting tomorrow. And tomorrow, with the department head meeting, I'll review, we'll review this with the department heads, and it's called for Section 22, the one titled Monetary Expenditure Limits. I'll explain that one in depth. And then each department head will sign that they have received and they understand the purchasing policy and their responsibilities in it, and then we will make sure everyone can comply. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
I'm moving.
Would have a second? Any discussion?
I'd just like to say one thing, Mr. Chairman. I had had a couple of department heads contact me when they saw this on the agenda, and they were profusely thankful. I think this is the type of reform that the Evergreen study was designed to create, creates kind of a seamless, smooth transactional process, and I think it'll work real well, and I appreciate you all working to get that implemented for our departments. Thank you.
Anything else? I agree with Mr. Gentlemen, so this seems so much more functional to me, should expedite. I think this is a type of reform that the Evergreen study was designed to create, creates a kind of a seamless, smooth transactional process, and I think, I think it'll work real well, and I appreciate you all working to get that implemented for our departments. Thank you.
Anything else? I agree with Mr. Gentlemen, so this thing is so much more functional to me, should expedite a few things. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, a pick your hand. Unanimous. Okay, we'll turn this over to Ms. Dirks. I have other comments.
At this point, we have no one signed up to speak.
Then we'll move forward. All of the commissioners have the concern agenda. I've had an opportunity to read it. Do I hear a motion or that? Is your second? Motion is second, and that will be approved. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, a pick your hand. Unanimous. Mr. Stocker with staff report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I have two things to report. The first, the tax department would like to report that it's time to list your personal property and any changes to your real estate. They need to be reported in the tax department every, it's thirty-one days, I believe, right? And if they were a person, they may be listening, so everybody just get it in this one. And if you have any questions there, I'm more than happy to help. And Mr. Chairman, you had asked me to give you a summary of the Evergreen report. You should have that in front of you, a three-page costs summary, on eight and a half by eleven, in more detail, a summary of each item and its status. And on the cost summary, if you'll turn to the last page, you'll see that we have implemented in the current year about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars worth of savings, which will equate to a hundred and seventy thousand every year thereafter. Evergreen's number is three nineteen, but obviously, we haven't got everything implemented at this time. The only number that I did leave out is the eight hundred thousand that they have as a revenue generator for water, water fees, and there's still some of that, so we'll discuss the others. And also, on that page, I had other savings that were about in the Evergreen recommendation that was brought in, it was a process, and for the current year, that is five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, with the on-year, five hundred and sixty-three thousand. On the top of your real sheets, you will see that we have either completed or ongoing forty-two dollars thirteen recommendations, or thirty-seven percent, we have fifty-six progress right now, or a fifty percent number. We have ten current, hundred and two at five percent, and we've moved it five over, probably to not face more than seven-four percent. If there's any questions about those sheets, then I'll be more happy to do them, just that for the most.
Anybody have any questions? I don't have any questions. I would just comment that five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars is a very impressive number. That shows a lot of hard work, a lot of good folks. If you compare that, and I understand it's not all Evergreen, but you compare that to Evergreen cost, you've got a return on investment of about four hundred percent. That is very impressive. Thanks for everything, and department heads, I know you're all working hard on it with Jim and Ben, and I appreciate it, and that's the kind of effort that will get us where we need to go. Ms. Dirks, your next.
Just have just a few things quickly to report, and this is kind of hitting on Evergreen as well. One of the things that we are looking diligently at continuing, we've done this for several years, and we're going to continue to do this, is succession planning, looking at cross-training and promoting from within. We feel very strongly, if you look at the past motions that we've done in the past few months and in the past few years, we are growing our leaders. They're starting in our departments, they're working their way, they're getting familiar with those departments, and a lot of those have been promoted at department head level, and that has proven very successful to us. It's also a very good morale boost throughout the county, throughout our departments, so we will continue to do that, and we will continue to do through cross-training and making sure that we all have the ability to help each other out when we need to, and we will continue to look and always look internally first, because that's, that's what it's about. If you, if you can come in and you can work your way up, then there should be some type of reward mechanism, and I know the most recent that we've had is Brian, but we have a lot of department heads that have started at the ground level and worked all the way, all the way up to department head level, so we will continue to do, do that, and I appreciate the commissioner's support in doing that. So that's pretty much what I wanted to report. The other thing is the budget packets are out. We sent those out right before Christmas, so our department heads have those budget packets, and those are redo packets regularly, so we will be getting with you to go over, we'll be working with that with the department heads, with their requests, and then we'll be getting with you sometime in March or April to look at a budget workshop.
That sounds good. I think anytime you can promote from within, that's just good business to do that. I look around this room, and I see several that are up the ladder away from where they started out, and that's good, and we want to do that whenever it's practical to do Okay, we're to our old business section. Anybody have any old business? New takers, new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, my cohorts from Wibbety are here. I'd like to remind everybody that the historic facility will be dedicated Friday, and Jack Coons has served as our chair of Wibbety, and he wanted no part of the facility, being named after him, but the board voted unanimously to overthrow him, the chairman. Jack has been a treasure to Davie County, everything from fire services to establishing the veterans monument down on the square, and small tribute to a job well done, good and thank you, sir. Invite my fellow commissioners to join us over there Friday if their schedules allow, but we appreciate it.
Yes, we do, and Jack has done a great deal for this county. Goes back probably more years than he wants to acknowledge, but I remember when Jack and I first met, and we had darker hair a bit than Jack, and I had a little more olive. And the great thing about Jack, he brought his family up into public service also. Brian Coons, who is our chief in his department, any of you know Brian? He's sort of a chip off the old block here. We continue to expect big things from Brian. Okay, we now will need to go into a closed session to establish our instructor, publics, body, staff on negotiating with agents about a real estate transaction or something of that of nature. Let's go down to general statutes, one four three dash three one eight, one 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 eight five. So if you would excuse us, we, time out, time out, let me get that approved. I need a motion to get that approved.
A little bit.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
If I may, can I ask Jack to recite the location of the property that could be on Dethoe Street?
Yes.
And a purpose would be to consider it for a county department?
Yes. Department or department.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We have motion and a second. All in favor, show your body up, pick your hand. Unanimous. So if you excuse us, we will. Of course, then I'll take long, and we'll back to business. Okay, we are back in regular session. We are going to make the change here, and I'm going to just briefly summarize what we covered tonight, and we are going to start the meeting, the individual comments. Anytime as we go on to comment, any of you chair, any of you choose to ask this individual questions, I'm sure all of us would be glad to stay here and answer your questions individually after the meeting, as long as you would like for us to. Tracy, we're glad to have you with us tonight, and congratulations on your promotion. A job well done, and promotion turned, and we wish you well with your new assignment. Johnny, again, congratulations, you're in your fine group. Job well done, and I hope this one, if you don't have to go out in the middle of the night too many times. And you have our gratitude. Jack Coons has left, but those of you that can, please try to go to his thing on Friday afternoon, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Jack has worked very hard in the county and deserves the recognition. Other than that, that about concludes our agenda. Do I have a motion, we adjourn? And a motion is second, we adjourn. All in favor? Unanimous, we are adjourned.